Hello.
Okay, we just need Chris and we'll be all set. Joel Cia, Biden chose is running me.
Yeah, after I declined when he called me, I knew he told me who he's gonna pick next, so it wasn't a surprise.
Well, she was my first choice. Okay. We just need Chris, but we'll wait a couple of minutes and then get started. We can go through the preliminaries if he doesn't come on in a couple of minutes.
Hi, Chris.
How you doing?
Hello, Chris.
Hey, Al.
Oh, you're a baby.
Yep, going back on.
We'll get started. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the public folks who are listening in. We have a nice group, it looks like, of about 15 folks listening in on this. This is a workshop for the Albany City Planning Board, and we have four of our five planning board members in attendance, including Christopher Ellis, Glynis Gueillard, Roman Kuchera, and myself, I'm Al DeSalvo, the chair. Also attending as our council, Amy Levine, and the Director of Planning for the City of Albany as well. The purpose of this meeting, and then, oh, I'm sorry, and I didn't mention it, Brad Glass, I should have. The purpose of this meeting is for the planning board to review projects that are new or projects that we've seen before but may have moved along in the process, might have given us some clarification or advanced or have changed. The discussion is between the planning board staff and the planning board. The public can listen in but cannot comment. However, the planning staff or the planning board may ask a question for clarification to a participant or an applicant. The public, of course, will have the opportunity to testify at our next planning board meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, August 25th. So with that, I'd like to begin, and our first project on the agenda is the project known as 244 State Street, which is also known as 90 South Swan. And the proposal here that some of you have already seen on a couple of occasions is to convert a 40, approximately 45,000 square foot building that is now an office building into 61 dwelling units. And the purpose of the planning board to review this is that it's a major development plan review. So, Brad, you're up.
Okay. Yep, so I think all the projects we, and I did want to recognize Luis Roldan from our staff who's also on and is helping me with the backend of things tonight as well as in preparation for the meeting. I think, I believe all the cases that are on the agenda tonight, the board has seen before at some point or another. In some of them, there's a discussion of, you know, what the next steps are going to be. So the first tonight is the 2 Colvin Avenue. It's the proposal to construct the Stewart Shops in the corner of Washington and Colvin Avenue. The site area is identified here, there are five parcels, three of which has buildings. And those buildings would be demolished, a combination of a new building, elevations here. And site plan here, there's a full site plan set that should be accessible to board members as well as the public on the city website. This is the landscaping plan, I just pulled this as an example, showing the building layout and the pumps and the, some of the landscaping features. Just some project updates, as you recall, the, the, the planning staff on behalf of the planning board sent a letter to stewards back in May that identified some of the concerns with the project and how it may not meet our standards for conditional use permit in particular, also speaking to the demolition review in certain cases. The applicant, Stewart Shops, did respond to that on the 20th of July. And the, on August 4th, a letter was entered in the record, staff recommend memorandum and recommendations sort of clarifying our staff's position on some of the various elements of the conditional use review and how they may have been addressed by some of the responses or potentially could be addressed through modifications of the proposal moving forward. I'm happy to read or cite language from any of those various correspondence. I assume that you all have them and have seen them, but it may be helpful for the record for me to point out. So why don't I, I'll just point out some of the issues that the planning board initially raised that we would be looking to the applicant for response. One of the things that I think really stood out was the M U N C district language, particularly references predominantly nondestination, non-auto oriented retail and commercial establishments. There was a question of whether this, you know, is consistent with that sort of objective. Certainly, we did want to emphasize the word predominantly, so it's not prohibitive of those uses. It's just seeking a balance with respect to that. That would be a staff opinion. There's also some concern that design is automobile oriented, that the applicant did make a pretty strenuous effort to move the building up to the street frontage, which I think was welcomed. There still is questionably a concern about, you know, the building generally orienting to Washington Avenue but also internal to the site, which is typical of gas stations, but does leave that Colvin Avenue frontage without a traditional entrance. I think otherwise the applicant has done a relatively good job of, you know, trying to emulate some of the other, you know, building character in that area. That said, there are, I think, more sort of building footprint and built out frontage area that's being removed and being replaced. So I think there was a concern there if the new development sort of broke up that street wall along Washington Avenue and maybe created some inconsistencies with the character of the area. There is a concern of the harmful cumulative effects, impacts of aggregate similar conditional uses. Principally, there's a vehicle fueling station just across on the opposite corner of Washington and Colvin. There's another vehicle fueling station, I believe, at Anthony Street and Colvin, just up the block. And there's a question of whether there was really a distinctive need that was identified. And I know there have been concerns expressed about traffic and screening and the impact on neighboring residences, property values and such. The applicant did provide a appraisal for the record that spoke to not an overly significant evaluation. There was a noted minor devaluation of potentially of two properties at 143 and 145 Rosemont Street, approximately $5,000 for each property. But other than that, they felt their analysis shows that the impact on tax revenue for the city would be positive. Property and school taxes would likely increase from $31,000 a year to $47,000. And that wouldn't be including the sales, gas, and other use taxes that are paid by commercial uses within the city. There would be a question of whether that's net new tax or redistributed from, from others. But the presumption there is that there is at least some net new. And then there was also evidence submitted into the record by both the Commissioner of Planning as well as the Stewart Shops with respect to the fact that gas stations do coexist in many locations. And in those locations, you know, they're, I don't know that it's, it's certainly not always the case. It may not be the predominant case that one necessarily puts the other out of business, creating that sort of a concern that I think was expressed that, you know, if Stewart's is, you know, if the other gas station were to be in that fierce competition with a, with a competing gas station, in this case Stewart's, if both of them can sustain themselves and what the outcome would be for the city if one did not, whether that would be an undesirable outcome. And there were some other responses, particularly in the, in the commissioner's letter with respect to, you know, meeting the other conditional use permit criteria. And I really think that the board, in moving forward, needs to be very careful in, in, you know, however choose to pursue moving forward with, with how they approach these, these criteria, because I think that, you know, some of the arguments and some of the points that were, were raised are relevant to our considerations and some may not be, be relevant or may need to be supported with additional evidence if we're, if we're still moving forward making those claims. So I'll leave it at that. I think that's all I had, well, I did, okay. Just the next steps on what the, the next steps for the board would be. This project does require a number of different approvals with respect to the planning board. It's a conditional use permit for the use, the vehicle fueling station use, which is, you know, reviewed on a case by case basis in this particular zone district. A demolition review for the three buildings that would be demolished, and that's usually in tandem with the development plan review for the, for the new development. And I believe there will be some area variances required at the BZA. They may be able to be dealt with through waiver provision of the planning board, but that's something that, you know, we would deal with as we move forward. The immediate issue would be to, if, declare lead agency for seeker for the planning board, depending on how the board chooses to move forward at the 25th meeting.
Brad, before we move on, according to our agenda, that was the third item. I wanted to draw your attention, the fact that I had introduced the first item, which was the 244 State Street item, and the second one being 60 Colvin Avenue. This was the third, so I don't know. I just wanted to check in with you before we proceed to make sure that whatever one is next, I don't know exactly what order you have them in, but this was the printed agenda that was sent out by Zach.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's my mistake, Al. I, I was kind of working off a PowerPoint template that someone had put together for me, and I think the slides may have just been out of order. Could you just orient me to, if you'd like to pursue with the, the current item we're discussing or come back to that? And if not, what?
Oh, no, let's, let's continue. I just wanted to make sure somehow we go on or, you know, so that, so we can follow with the.
I will listen, I will listen more carefully when you call the next case, pause.
That's all right. I guess one of the, one of the items that I, I just wanted to mention is that the commissioner had mentioned, given eight examples of where other gasoline convenience store stations are across from each other and are surviving. However, six of those eight are in suburban areas that are quite automobile oriented. The only two that I would concede are not in either suburban areas or heavily trafficked areas, I mean, really heavily trafficked areas. For example, the one in Troy on Husek Street that he mentions is, is of course Whitehall and Delaware here in our own city and Washington Street and West Avenue in Saratoga Springs. The other six, though, are all in suburban and automobile oriented communities. I just wanted to point that out, something that I thought was of interest to the ones that he chose. Are the planning board members have any questions to Brad on this project? And I know that you all received the, the report, and I hope you've read it. There's also, I will direct your attention to the Dropbox. There is a new August 4th letter in there that you might want to read as well. That letter is correspondence from members of the community that we've heard from before. Are there questions from the board that you wanted to ask Brad about anything on this one? Sounds like not, it looks like we're pretty well versed on this, so definitely have this one on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, we, Al, we will make a point to go through each of the conditional use permit criteria at the, at the meeting. So we'd ask everyone to be prepared to, you know, kind of have a discussion as to how the application does or does not meet those criteria.
Okay. So I have on the printed agenda, the next item being 244 State Street, which is also known as 60 South Swan. And this is the conversion of a 45,000 square foot office building into 61 apartment units. And this one, of course, we've also seen on a couple of occasions. And Brad, you can certainly tell the board where we have been and where we're going with this one.
Hey, yeah, just to reorient everybody, this is the, the structure. It's a pretty unique in where it's located. It's, you know, it's in, it's located in an MU CU district, although it is adjacent to, to some other districts, multifamily and townhouse. It's very proximate at the same time to the Capitol Building as well as the Smith Building and the Empire State Plaza. The proposal is to convert this building to a residential use. It has been sporadically, or has been underutilized for office purposes for some time. In speaking with the, the owners, you know, they've indicated they've tried to market and lease the property pretty consistently. They do have other experience locally as well as elsewhere doing residential conversion product, projects. And, you know, they think, given, you know, a lot of things that are changing with respect to the economy and the, the historic lack of interest in the property, that a residential, it's the right time for residential conversion of the property. We did have a meeting with both the applicant and representatives of the Center Square Association and the local council member on the 23rd of July. We, we kind of discussed some of the, the concerns that were presented to us by the neighborhood stakeholders as well as some of the plans and the economic feasibility of what, you know, what is and is not feasible with respect to the, to the building. We subsequently did a site visit to 20 Park Street with the same group of individuals that were involved with the initial meeting on the 7th of August. And generally, I think, as a comparable product, arguably comparable, there were some noted distinctions between the, the unit types and the two properties. But overall, the property seemed to have been, you know, well-developed, well-managed. And I think that any lack of confidence with respect to the, the individuals involved with developing the property, while that's not really our purview, I think that site visit did help sway some of those concerns. There were a number of items that came up, such as, you know, trash and potential accommodations for offsite parking that we're waiting to hear from the applicant as to, you know, what their plans or proposals are for those items. And there's still a, a general concern that's being expressed to us about the overall lack of diversity in the type and size of the dwelling units. Certainly, you know, that is a target market as well, given the, the location. Some of the amenities they're proposing and the type of, you know, individuals they're looking to, to attract. So I think there, there are arguments made either way. But, you know, again, I think there's still some concern. And I, you know, I have to turn to, to council and maybe we need to have a further conversation about to what extent the planning board can influence, you know, sort of the internal design of the, the units or the types of units within the building, because our code really doesn't, doesn't speak to that in this particular zone district. So that, that is, that is an update on, on that project. As far as department approvals, I believe we have the majority, if not all, of the department sign-offs. There is a, there would be a new crosswalk and handicap ramps installed at the end of Chestnut Street leading to the plaza, where that's currently a sort of a deficiency there. And that cost would be borne by the developer as a result that we hope and think that, that more people will be walking as a result of the, this project.
Will we be seeing an update on the project on the 25th? Or will everything be ready for, for the board to make a decision on this by the 25th? What's your thought about that? It looks like you say.
I think the board would, would be in a position to act on the 25th. I think it would be prudent to wait for, you know, an additional submission from the applicant with respect to those items we discussed. But I guess, you know, there's a question of to what extent the planning board has influence over some of those items. So I don't know that I would, you know, you know, I think it should remain on the agenda. And I think the board would be in a position to act. But obviously, you know, there may be further discussion that's warranted.
Does council have any comment on that?
I think, I think that the planning board can exercise some influence on the types of housing that are involved. But I would, I would advise against getting too involved with, with the interior issues. The way it's set up, the sizes, certainly, you know, the interior fixtures and those types of things.
Yeah. Okay. The board, does the board have any questions to Brad on this one?
Yeah, can you elaborate a little more on the parking? And, because I'm trying, I'm not familiar with what the current occupancy of the building is and has been in recent years and what the increase or change in, in parking requirements would end up with the conversion.
So, you know, at, looking at the code and, and general, you know, calculations that are used, this is a, a net reduction in the parking demand because you're going from an office use to a residential use. Currently, it doesn't appear that the building has any parking on site or has the ability to accommodate any parking on site. So per the code, there's no additional parking provision required. That said, we have spoken with the applicant, and I know he has explored options at One Commerce Plaza, which is a couple of short blocks to the north. They've also looked at the, the parking garage, a couple of blocks over in the opposite direction on Lancaster Street, potentially acquiring that and using that. And I think they're generally interested in having the, those spaces accessible to some degree to their tenants. But I, I think they're also of the belief, you know, which is somewhat borne by the evidence that some residents won't have cars. Or, so it's going to be, it's going to be a mix. So, you know, I don't know if there will be one parking space set aside for each unit. That's one of the items we're, we're looking to your back from the applicant as, applicant from. It'll probably be, you know, some unit, some, some spaces are set aside and some of them are, you know, an option to be, to be leased or rented directly by the individual that's living there or through the company for a certain fee in addition to their rent.
Okay, but we don't really have, we don't have any data to compare one by one. I'm assuming that the, the parking requirement's based on total existing building size as opposed to actual occupancy? Is that correct?
Um, the, the traditional parking requirement per our code, if this were a new build, would be one space per unit. And that could be varied by a number of sort of exemptions for proximity to transit. If there are on-street spaces, there's a number of things. So it generally ends up being lower than that. Looking at census data, the per household's number of vehicles for this area is about .75 per households, and these being units on the smaller side. You could potentially argue that it would be less than that. You know, it's the catch-22, if you start playing around with the units and making them bigger, you may actually generate more of a, of a parking demand. And I think we've discussed too, just the dichotomy between nighttime and daytime parking. Obviously, office and resident, residential users do have a potentially different impact depending on, you know, if they're working from home or they're working from elsewhere. So that's something that I think is in the back of people's minds, that even though, you know, office requires more, it's sort of a different type of parking demand than, than the residential department, parking demand that's going to be created by the proposed project.
Yeah, I guess, I was just trying to look at it from a layman's point of view of, I don't know if there, what the occupancy in that building is and has been in recent years. If it's only operating at, let's say, 50% occupancy, and then clearly you're going to have less actual cars parking in the vicinity of the building during, during the, you know, the work hours. And I don't know, I'm curious how that would be changed with the conversion to apartments. You know, I'm just.
Oh, well, I mean, at, at some point, I guess, you know, we hope for the building to be fully occupied. I, I really don't see too many uses that are going to generate more of a parking demand than the residential use. But yeah, I mean, it's sporadically, it's, it's only partially occupied now. So, you know, I would imagine that the, at some period, there will be a jump in demand. So, you know, I would imagine that the, at some period, there will be a jump in demand.
I think, I think we heard from the applicant that there are two floors, the two upper floors are totally vacant, if I'm remembering correctly, and that the number of actual offices and occupants in the building now are pretty light over the last couple of years. I can't remember, you know, exact numbers, but I do know that the building is, is rather empty, except for a few offices occupied by, you know, X number of people, but not a lot.
Right. So parking definitely is something that'll pop up with, I'm sure.
It has, yes. It definitely has.
I think that the applicant has acknowledged that and is looking to make some accommodation. We don't have a explicit detail on what that may be, but we do hope to have that in advance of the meeting.
Other comments or questions on 244 state? Okay, we'll move on. The next item I have on the agenda, Brad, is 60 Colvin Avenue.
Okay, 60 Colvin Avenue. Does the site familiar? The site plan? And the elevation rendering? You may remember the last time we met on this, there was a lot of discussion regarding potential contamination at the site. Since then, we have been in dialogue with the applicant as well as council member for the area. And I have attended a couple of common council committee hearings regarding a council member O'Brien's resolution that he's introduced that speaks to the planning board review. In particular, there was, it was, the, the resolution has, it's non-binding. It has been modified and it, you know, I did let the council know that it has been modified. And I don't know if this is the final version. I think there's a whereas that I had asked for the language to be changed, but generally with respect to what's being suggested or requested, I don't have any objections to that. And what they're looking for is obviously a secret review of the project, which is, which is mandated and that, you know, I assume with respect, speaking to the particular, particular items of potential contamination and that we've sufficiently reviewed that, that additional soil tests be conducted towards the, the western portion of the site. And I'll get to that in just a minute. And that the, that the planning staff, you know, work with the council and others to just sort of set up a procedure or protocol so that if and when this sort of issue comes up again, we have a little bit more coherent methodology for, for dealing with that. Some of these do end up being unique circumstances, but someday, these could present themselves again. In the context of this, you know, we did, there are other areas of the city in the conference, the plan that are identified as potential brownfields, and we just want to make sure that we're mindful of, of potential because, you know, we don't want necessarily creating obstacles where, where obstacles aren't, aren't necessary. And then here was just, I believe it references the Clough Harbor report from '06 to '08 where there was kind of that fill area that, some of which there was lead found and some of that general fill area did come onto this project site. And it, it was pointed out to me, the reason I want to bring this to the board really is because even in agreeing that additional testing locations should be done, and this is sort of a conglomerate of, you know, different borings or test borings, they're not, they weren't all tested for contamination, but it gives you an idea of where those are as well as where some of the other borings were conducted on the site. And I want to make sure, and obviously it's up to the board's discretion as to whether to require any additional testing, that we do move forward, we get as close to being on the same page as we can with respect to where that takes place. I know at the, the council committee meeting that I was at, the northwest and the southwest corners, we had cited in a letter to the applicant that we suggested we, they explore those in greater detail. And it was pointed out, you know, in the map I just showed on the last page, you know, that, that area on that other report was more in the center of the location. So, you know, I don't know if there need to be three test pits on the back or, in any case, I just wanted to make, you know, my position on that, you know, you know, we believe it would be prudent, the planning staff, to conduct some additional tests along that western property boundary, just to, just to be sure. I do believe the applicant may want to speak to this as well if they're on the call. And I would suggest that the planning board in the, in the hopes of maybe getting everyone's views about how we should move forward, you know, on record, may want to let other individuals from the public or common council otherwise speak to how we should move forward or, or not move forward with respect to additional testing. Regarding other issues, we did send a lengthy comment letter, which you should have available to you. If you don't, I'll make sure that gets into the Dropbox a couple of weeks ago to the applicant that articulates the other items we're looking for them to address.
Okay, the board members have any questions or comments on this? I do, I have a couple of questions, Brad. Can you go back to the ordinance?
Yes.
And I've got to kind of hold it because I got to read this. Item A, before it says be, be it finally resolved, it says require a seeker review for project, for the project and do a hard look as required by the courts. What level of seeker then are we, if we approve to move forward? What kind of seeker are we suggesting or what the heck's a hard look? And how does this differ from the seeker process that we normally do?
Oh, a hard look is the legal standard that's used under seeker. It's used for all seeker actions essentially. So this, this subsection A is really, it's really just stating what's already required at the planning board. I, I did mention that to the council member and I think they, he wanted to leave it in regardless.
And the other question I have is, um, the, I mean, this is going back to old news, but, and I'm kind of scratching my head as to why we're looking at doing more testing when the comprehensive plan identified a potential brownfield on the very northwest corner. And that, if this is built out, is going to be under a parking lot. And it extends into Arnold Street a little bit. And my understanding is that the rest of the site closer to Colvin Avenue, which would be the, I guess, the south corner, the issue there was landfill. Because the last couple of reports that, on the history of this was that the properties that were going to be built there, they pulled out of because the site was too unstable and they would have, have to spend too much money for a infrastructure that was too expensive. So I'm not understanding as to why we are looking to do additional test points. Do we have, I mean, is this?
Are you looking for a response from me, Al, or?
Yes. Oh, I mean, is this something that the developer has agreed to?
I, I don't believe so, which is one of the reasons, I, I don't know, I can't, I can't speak for what their exact position is. I, if they're here, I think Dan Hirschberg has raised his hand.
Greenwich is on.
Well, I, I just, I feel we're going over old news here. I thought, you know, it's just very frustrating. I would ask Dan for a comment on that.
All right.
Could you, can you get on the line, Luis?
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you.
Yes.
Okay. The situation, first of all, when this was raised, actually two meetings ago, by Mike O'Brien, Bill Hennessy put together a report showing that all of the land is capable of being developed for residential standards set by New York State DEC regarding the level of contamination. Most of the contaminants were at a non-detect level and the others were at other levels. The, the site did have significant fill. It's used to hold a place called Schaefer's Pond, which was on the front portion of the site, not at the rear where the dog park is. Used to be used as a picnic grove. It was in the 1940s and early 1950s. I went there myself. And when it was abandoned, people cut down trees and they dumped them into the, into the pond area, which make it not very stable for soils. Consequently, on that portion of the site, Tony, Tony proposed to use a lightly loaded building, which can be built on spread footings. We had a, a proposal, Dan Laus did a proposal of it, which sort of backed up the report done by Dante when Bider Choice was interested in it. There had been no findings of any contamination on the site, which raised the level of not allowing residential development according to New York State DEC standards. And Bill Hennessy put the better comprehensive report of that. And this map was made up to show you all of the tests that were on there. There were some additional tests called, you might not be able to see them too well. There was three, four, five, six, seven, and eight were put in on, on this plan because they were tests made by Clough Harbor, which showed no contamination. So even though they, they spread over a good portion of the site, they show no contamination. One map that was attached to that legislation shows an area contamination entirely back on the area behind us, back by where the dog walking park is. And then there's a lighter line that extends out from it that says potential limit of, of spread of contamination. That would be a plume, but it was never verified there. The darker brown area was verified to have contaminants to a level that could require mitigation depending upon the usage. So I think the issue of whether contamination exists on the site, whether or not this is a brownfield. Brownfield being a term of art, this talks about something that qualifies for, under New York State DEC laws, as a brownfield. And obviously, from what we're seeing now, this site does not qualify as a brownfield at all. And the fact that it was called a potential groundfill may have been due to that little hook of surrounded by the light brown line that extended onto our site. But it's, we never found any contamination on any of the tests that were done there. Most of them were non-detecting level, others were at levels below the level permitted for New York State DEC allowable for residential use.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts or comments on this?
You know, I would just ask, I mean, there are, looking at the test pits on the, that are shown on the map, at least the most recent ones conducted by, by Hennessy, and to some degree, all of them, there don't appear to have been any done in that back area. Now, Al, you raised the question, it's going to be a parking lot. Maybe that's not necessary, but I, you know, I would just point that out. I, you know, I think that's what some of the council members had raised when I was at the committee meetings, is that looking at the map, there were potentially some gaps that may have missed something.
You know, I mean, I raised this with the council, but I'll, I'll let you guys know as well. I actually think that it would be to our benefit to actually talk to DEC and find out, you know, whether or not this is necessary whatsoever. The, the Westland Hills Dog Park is actually listed in DEC's database. They have information about that site. And they should, you know, they don't have this site listed, but they should be able to give us better guidance, I believe.
Okay, can we, can we get that information before the board meeting?
I, I don't know the particular person at the state agency nor their availability, so I can certainly make the call tomorrow. I did speak with Department of State and I, but I have not spoken with the DEC.
Okay. Well, let's see if we can get that information.
You know, DEC, you know, working remote, their turn times are extremely long, like for a FOIL request running. However, the actual question that should be asked, when, if Hennessy did the most recent testing, were those submitted to DEC and DEC responded a letter? Typically, they'll respond with a letter saying that, yeah, it meets the guidelines and no action is required, no further actions required. That would be what, something we'd be looking for. And that would be, that would be typically requested by the engineering firm. They would provide their data, their test data to DEC and saying, you know, based on this, if it doesn't exceed the levels, as Dan says, for residential use, then, you know, for all practical purposes, the site is okay to build on. And then DEC would, would give a thumbs up to, that the, no further investigation or remediation is required. And that's probably something that you would want to look for in this instance, you know? And going forward, Brad, talking about sites like this, how would you, you know, potential brownfield, well, you can say any site in the city is a potential brownfield. So how, how is this going to be addressed going forward? In just a basic seeker analysis or, you know, it sounds like we're loading the boat with something that we don't need, you know?
I, I feel pretty strongly that we don't need to reinvent, you know, the wheel for this. DEC regulates environmental contamination very thoroughly. You know, I've, I've talked with Marisa about this as well, Corporation Council. You know, we don't need to do the same types of regulation at the city level.
Um, then, if, what you're saying, Roman, and I know that you're very well averse on all of this, is that maybe the first order is to request or to ask Hennessy if they've gotten a, some kind of a go-ahead from DEC or a letter from DEC. Is that true? And if not, is it something that they're, that they can get quickly? Because you just said the turnaround time is tough.
Yeah, quickly nowadays is four to six weeks.
Yeah, okay.
That would be quick. But yes, I mean, if the, I'm assuming that the, the property owner commissioned Hennessy to do the environmental testing, and if they did come back, as Dan said, where they're below the minimum requirements for DEC, then what typically happens is then they would submit their report with the testing results to DEC and say, you know, please, we'd like to recommend then closure of this, of the site, if indeed any kind of status, if there is any kind of open status with the DEC records on the site. And for that matter, even, doesn't they say, listen, we had these testing, there's nothing, you know, it's below the minimum level, so we want a thumbs up on this. And it'll be something within DEC's records. That way, they can move forward with their construction.
I think Joe Greenwich, is one of the applicants, had his hand raised.
If he can make, give some clarification on this specific discussion, that would be helpful.
Yeah. Hi, guys, it's Joe Greenwich. How are you? I'm here with Tony Thomas is my partner. We have some thoughts on the discussion that just happened. I'm going to let Tony go first. And then if you guys have any questions of us, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
So I like, well, I want you to, I want you to just relate. Well, I want you to, I want you to relate the issue at hand, okay, and not give a whole presentation.
No, 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 absolutely. We're gonna talk about the issue of contamination. So I'm gonna allow Tony to address what we were just discussing, and then if I need to add anything, I will, but we'll keep it on topic, Al.
Okay.
This is Tony DeThomas. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I had suggested to Bill Hennessy exactly what the board, the chairman, had said is, why don't we get a letter from DEC saying that everything is okay? And what Bill had relayed to me is what, what you would have to do is the only way DEC would get involved is if during the testing period, they determined that levels that were above the standard or above any level that DEC has determined to be actionable, you send that into DEC, and then DEC would then respond with either, you know, a letter stating, you know, it's not a problem, or you're gonna have to deal with it. But if there is no or minimal contamination on any site, you can't ask the DEC to provide you with that letter, because I've been trying to get that letter from, that would be, you know, that would be beneficial for us to get it, and I think take all of the issues out, but apparently, according to Bill Hennessy, that is not something we can do.
Interesting.
Amy, can you, Amy, can you repeat what you said on the DEC site? What was it?
Yeah, you can actually go onto the DEC website, and they maintain a database of basically, you know, every property in New York State that's been reported on. And so you can, you know, you can look up addresses. It's a little funny sometimes to get the address just right, but, you know, the Westland Hills Dog Park, which the city owns, that's the city's property, that property is listed on the DEC website because it does have contamination on it. The current listing, it was, you know, for a time, the reason that the Clove Harbor report was done was because the city was considering remediating that site. And so DEC, I think, I think a lot of the listing comes from that report, which DEC was involved in. Since the city withdrew that site from the brownfields program, when the city decided not to remediate it, DEC changed the listing, and I believe that it's currently listed as Class N, I want to say, which is basically, you know, it's contaminated, but it's not a present health risk to anybody. But, you know, I encourage all of you to go take a look at their database of environmental contaminants, because, I mean, it's somewhat, it's somewhat illuminating to see just how much information they have about the city's property, you know, that's just next to this one. Whereas this property, you know, has not been, it hasn't been included within DEC's, within any of their cleanup programs.
Okay, so it sounds like when the city, the city was actually trying to get brownfield funding for cleanup, if necessary, a site, and yet it didn't meet that requirement, so kind of a dead end there. And if, what the applicant's saying that Bill Hennessy mentioned that there was no, he couldn't file anything with DEC because he didn't find anything wrong, sounds like there was ever nothing found on site that re-met the requirements to be recorded with DEC, which makes it a non-issue.
That's how I understand it.
Okay. Any other thoughts, any other questions on this?
Joe Greenwich has his hand raised again. Don't know if he got to speak last time. I believe we heard Tony.
Right, well, maybe he doesn't need to, just to put his hand back down again, which I don't know how you do that.
I don't know. He seems to be raising it repeatedly, so.
Okay.
If that's just the system, or if he's really anxious to talk.
Joe, do you need to speak? I guess not.
I'm sorry, Al. Al?
Yeah.
You hear me?
Yeah.
I, I feel that I have to raise one issue, and I know Tony talked to the technical aspect of this, but I think this is relevant at this time. So we have been about two and a half years into this project. And needless to say, I think everyone will acknowledge that Michael Brian has been opposed to this project from day one, and his ordinance would acknowledge that fact. But what my issue, Al, is this. In essence, what I am asked to be, what I'm being asked to do is to prove a negative. And while I'm willing to do whatever you require me to do to take this project to the next level, I caution the planning board and the council to acknowledge the fact that Michael Brian's ordinance, while it was directed at my project at 60, as it references the 2030 plan and potentially hundreds, if not thousands of acres of land in the city of Albany, I caution everybody who's involved in listening to this to understand what this ordinance is designed to do. I own a piece of property that is adjacent to a known contaminated piece of property owned by the city of Albany. There has been no acknowledgement, there's been nothing to indicate that my property is at all contaminated, yet I am still, have attempted, and may potentially be asked to prove a negative. I find that to be in a very untenable position. And I just want you to understand, while I understand the members' opinions on a lot of this, if it is determined that I need to dig more test sites, I'm not opposed to it. I'm not happy about it. I don't think I should have to spend the exorbitant amount of money, in addition to what I've already spent, to prove a negative. But I want you to understand that I think you are presenting a dangerously, a dangerous precedent moving forward to other aspects of the city that have been identified in the 2030 plan that Mr. O'Brien's ordinance technically would attach to. And I caution other members of the council who are listening to acknowledge that that is a potential problem on a long-term development strategy within the city of Albany. I thank you for your time. I look forward to your comments. We will do whatever we can to move this project forward.
Okay, thanks. Okay, any other items, issues on this one? Okay. Somebody needs a silence there. Brad, are you going to do, present anything regarding the 76 project? Or should we move on to the Clinton Avenue project? That's the last item.
Yeah, I also had 11 Anderson Drive, Al. I don't know if that was something that maybe we wanted. Let's do, let's do 236 Clinton, and then we will do both 11 Anderson and 76, because I think those may not be on the agenda, but we may want to talk about adding them.
They are, and for 236, I need again to excuse myself because of my minor investment in the loan fund. And I guess maybe you can call me when you're done with that, so I can come back.
Okay. All right, so 236 Clinton Avenue. Not exactly sure when the board saw this last, but I know you've seen it a couple of times, and I think we've discussed some of the minor changes they made. We just wanted to provide you with an update. The project has received all of the department sign-offs with respect, with the exception of the Water Department approval. And that relates more to, the Water Department needs to make a referral to County Department of Health and New York State DEC, who I believe upon making that referral, rather uncommonly, they had raised some concerns, which I think are resolvable, in which case I did have a conversation with the Water Department. And in this specific case, they're willing to, you know, they're comfortable with a condition on the approval, speaking the need as expressed in the in the text on the screen here. You know, we have been reviewing this project for several months, and they are in the process of submitting a grant state, grant application to New York State HCR for funding. And it greatly benefits their project to have their approvals in hand when doing that. And I think, from the city's perspective, this is an important project. There, it's a site on Clinton Avenue that we've wanted to see developed for some time, and that, you know, a reputable nonprofit, community-oriented organization is, has partnered with another group out of Rochester that's done some major investment on Clinton Avenue. I think it's a big win. It is also being reviewed by the HRC, and they're expecting to seek that final approval from that board this month. And the County Planning Board has deferred to local consideration. So I'll entertain, you know, if anyone has any questions outstanding with respect to this project, I'm happy to either respond or follow up if necessary. But I think, I think the board is in a position to act in this upcoming meeting.
Wasn't there, Brad, some discussion with the applicant, they were gonna work on something with parking, or?
There is a site across the street, 255 to 271 Clinton Avenue, where Home Leasing, who is a partner in this project, owns a number of properties. And we have worked with them to develop a compliant plan that I believe was just submitted to our office, so it should be coming to the planning board in the next month or two, that would add additional 38 parking spaces at that property across the street. That while, you know, on paper, they're serving those, those properties across the street, I think there is inevitably going to be some crossover, so that will create some additional parking spaces in the neighborhood where those didn't exist before. Okay, I'll, should I give Al a call?
Yep.
Okay.
I don't know if the applicant also has their hand raised, I believe Daniel Hirschberg. I think you're muted, Brad.
You want to let Dan speak? Go ahead, Dan.
The situation here is, we don't have anything we can point to and say we have any approval. We don't, we only have an approval process which says we have preliminary approval or pending approval with the site. Our hope was that this board could pass some, some, some resolution that would be conditional upon us getting the final sign of Albany County Department of Health and New York State DEC. And by the way, Albany Water Department has not asked me to address those concerns yet, so my guess is they probably just came in. But we don't think there will be any problem, problem in the long range getting that. And HRC is, I think, on board to give their certificate of approvability at the next meeting. Is it possible that this board can take some action at tonight's meeting that we can call a conditional approval, preliminary approval, or something that we can pass on with our application? Because our application without that is gonna wane. It's not gonna do very well compared to other projects that have concept or conditional approval.
So thank you, Dan, for pointing that out. And I think I overlooked the fact that we did actually advertise this case because it wasn't in a position to be acted on at the prior meeting as a public meeting item for tonight's meeting. So that said, I do think we would need to take public comment, if there is public comment. But otherwise, we have met all the legal requirements for the board to act on this tonight. And given what Dan stated, and given the dialogue with the Water Department and their consent to the condition, I would encourage the board to do that.
So do we have any comments, Brad?
Are there any comments from members of the public? Could raise your, raise your hand, we'll allow you to speak. Each member will be granted three minutes to speak for the record. Luis, do we have anyone that's, that are raising their hands that you can see?
None that I can see. We also have a caller on the line. If you wanted to provide that caller with an opportunity to speak, since they can't raise their hand, we can give them that opportunity, if you like. One caller total.
Do you know that they want to speak on this application, or you're suggesting we ask?
We, I was suggesting we ask, because there's no way of knowing. They don't have a way of signaling to us that they would like to speak.
Okay, yeah, if you could do that.
Okay, caller, you have been unmuted. If you have any comments to provide, you can provide them now. If you do not, you just indicate you don't have any comments to make.
Seeing that there don't appear to be any comments, I would, I would put forward a staff recommendation to issue a negative declaration for this unlegitimate action, for this type-one action pursuant to seeker, as well as to approve the major development plan conditioned upon the applicant meeting the Albany Water Department standards, subject to review and approval by County Department of Health and DEC, who they facilitate this. I think someone would need to step up as well and take it on.
Yeah.
Calling for.
Brad, I move, I move first for negative declarations on seeker review.
And second, by Roman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed?
I believe, also, just so we're on the record, Al, Brad, I'm willing to step in as chair in the absence of Alan and Roman on this, so that we can advance this as, as the board. There's no confusion between board and staff.
I'm not amped, son.
I mean, I'm sorry, Martin, I'm sorry.
That's appreciated, Chris, and I apologize to all of you for not better facilitating this ahead of time.
No, it's, it's all good. So let's go through the vote just one more time, so we can have it for the record. We've had it moved and properly seconded that the board recommends negative declaration on the seeker. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right.
Aye.
You're voting no, Glanisa?
No, I said aye.
Aye, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so that motion carried. The second recommended action, which is for the, the approval of the project, major development plan for 236 Clinton and, I'm sorry, this is the address, 236 Clinton and 255 Orange Street. With the condition listed, the conditions are that the applicant must receive the Department of Health, and that's the county. The applicant must receive law consideration approval for 236 Clinton and 1 and 281 Orange Street, 220 and 255 Orange Street. Condition three, coordinate and receive their approval from Division of Traffic and Traffic Safety for their plan and proposed utility work on a public right-of-way, and also in response to the the health and other pieces that were. And also in response to the, the health and other pieces that were included in this staff presentation today. So those are the conditions. With the conditions, is there a motion? Well, just clarification, I thought the, I thought everything was met except for the water. Was that correct or no?
I would endorse the two conditions that Chris foot, put forward. I mean, those are things that may occur regardless, but I think underscoring them as conditions are, are helpful in this case.
Okay, so then, so moved, Chris. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Roman Cuchara, seconded by Glenysa Gillyard to take the recommended action with conditions. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. And that is unanimous. So we can call Al back and bring him in the room.
All right, I'm letting him know. Thank you, Chris.
Not a problem.
Okay, I'm here. And we have 11 Anderson Drive, which is the ABLE project. I know that we looked at this a few times and we were waiting for comments from any of the public. So where are we with this one now?
We, we were waiting for the final approval of the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan by Department of Water and Water Supply, and we did receive that approval. I believe within the last couple of days, and that is why this was not originally on the agenda. But being that this has been on our docket for a couple of months and that was the last outstanding item, I would suggest that we add it to the agenda for the, for the 25th.
Yeah, that sounds fine. If there's been no, you know, no problems and that's been approved, like, why not?
Okay. And then the other item. The other item is the 76 project. So they have, have filed a, a development plan demolition review submission with our office. They are still in the process of undergoing the, the rezoning that's still being evaluated by the common council. Typically, our practice has been historically that we await the, the conclusion of that process before reviewing development proposals that may be contingent upon that, that zone change. However, the applicant has requested and has, at their own risk, you know, requested that we begin review of this application. And my sort of suggestion was, and I, I, I bring this to you, you know, I would like to see both the, the planning board as well as the, the comic council being that they're reviewing the zone change, sort of consent to or endorse that, that strategy of beginning this review despite the fact that the zone change hasn't been completed. So I wanted to get the board's thoughts on that. Obviously, it's a, it's a, it's a significant project and they have, you know, some deadlines that they're trying to meet, so.
Any thoughts from the board?
Obviously, the board couldn't take any, any action until such time the rezoning, as well as the full project review. This would just be beginning the discussion of the review of those applications.
Amy, are we in a situation where we might be putting the cart before the horse? Or can we move forward in a parallel way on this without any issues that may arise about review?
I don't think that there's anything that specifically speaks to this in the USDO. I did talk with Brad earlier. I do think that starting the review process before the zoning is changed, I do think it presents somewhat of a, of an appearance of bias and prejudgment. Again, I'm not, I'm not sure that there's anything that would technically be invalid about it so long as, you know, the, any decision would come after all of the necessary prerequisite approvals.
So, yeah, so we would be reviewing this in parallel but making those decisions until action by the common council?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Are there any thoughts on this? Board members? I would also. Go on.
I'm okay with it, I think.
Okay, thank you.
As long as it's not setting, as long as it's not setting some kind of precedent that, you know, this will happen again and again. I don't know how you want to avoid that.
I mean, I, I think a lot of applicants are hesitant to produce the documentation and submit the fees without knowing. So I don't know that this will present itself in, you know, repeated circumstances. It could.
I would also direct the board on the Dropbox, there is a letter there from the South End, well, from a village that you might want to read. If you haven't already in the Dropbox, so take a look at that. That one was submitted fairly recently. It was after our meeting. Any other thoughts? Issues?
I'm not hearing any objections. Oh, sorry, someone's speaking.
Okay.
Is it, is it fair to say that we would want, you know, a, a general indication of council concurrence on this? I just don't want to give the presumption that we're not taking their review seriously. Although it's, it looks like Ms. Frederick has raised her, her hand, so we might want to let her speak to that.
And she is?
She is the council representative for the first ward.
Oh, Councilwoman. Yes. Okay.
Hi, yes, Sonia Frederick, first ward, common council. I'd say we might want to just run this quickly by research counsel JR, but as the council member who's sponsoring this rezone, I'm comfortable with, with you operating in tandem with our, with our approach.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilwoman.
I believe we've made JR aware, so we'll, we'll try and, we'll try and connect with him tomorrow.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, so we'll just go ahead and add this to the agenda in addition to Anderson Drive for the 25th.
All right, sounds good.
I think that's it, Al.
Okay.
Discuss.
Anything else? Yeah. What about, and we're not having 236 on the agenda?
So, Al, Al, we actually acted on that. I had forgotten that, you know, my conversation with Zach, that was actually added as a, this was advertised as a public hearing and a public meeting. And the public meeting was specific to 236 because I know that they have some grand deadlines they're supposed to make. And we, we worked very hard with the Water Department to, to craft a condition that allowed us to, allowed the board to be in a position to act on that. So the board, while you were off the call and.
Okay, yeah, I remember now that that was put on the agenda specifically to start us a public meeting. Okay.
So we, we figured it out. Chris stepped up and, you know, became our chair for, for a few moments there and we, we figured it out, so.
Well, thank you. And I went out and closed the windows on my car and locked the door and got the mail.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you very much, folks, and we'll see you on the 25th, if not earlier.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Bye.
Take care, Al.